Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived and gone. We'll call the regular meeting of the Sherman Boulevard Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Haun.
Excuse the absence.
Trustee Wong.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Village President Klaftel.
Yes, so that's six members answering the roll. Coram being present, we're going to proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. The record, today's date is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, we're at the Sherman Boulevard Hall, 1 St. John Drive in Sherman, Illinois. Time is 6:00 PM, officially it's 6:19 after a budget, a public hearing on the budget. The type of the meetings, the regular board meeting of the Sherman Boulevard Board of Trustees. In the opening, after the roll call, we have listed the Pledge of Allegiance, so if I could ask everybody to stand, place the flag. Eli, Penley, are you ready to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and get off of that device? Come up here, buddy. Right here, right there. We're gonna have you start us off and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, is that alright?
Pick up your hat.
Pick up your hat. Here, buddy, let's go, ready? Come on. Ready? Let's all do it together, alright? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Eli. Good job, bud. Alright, we need to set the agenda, the agenda's been posted 48 hours in advance, the meeting of course with the Open Meetings Act. No action items, anybody wishing to be recognized for discussion purposes only. Okay, seeing good. We'll entertain a motion to set the agenda, a motion to that effect. Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Wong. If ever signified by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, nice habit, the agenda's set. Clerk's report, item number one, presentation of the April 26th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. They're attached and then provided to you previous to the meeting, but they're also on your board number packet, you do a paper copy. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented by Clerk Mole? additions or corrections, okay, seeing none, Chairman Undertan motion to approve the April 26th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion's been made by Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Schultz. Clerk King's called to roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Wong.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yeah.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Okay, that's five members voting yes and one voting no. Over 26, we're meeting minutes got approved. Next item is the presentation of the bills for approval. There are none tonight, I'm sorry.
We just ran it last week.
Okay, that's right, we did just meet last week, so no, no bills for approval this evening. Moves us to the Treasurers Report.
We have the Treasurers Report, remember that?
None tonight, sorry, it's written right there. It's good.
It's alright, we'll keep it.
You guys are good. Village Engineers Report, he's not here this evening, taking the evening off, or giving us our meeting where we don't have to spend money on engineering, so...
We'll leave it tomorrow night to meet in the zone.
Yes, that's true. There is a zoning meeting tomorrow evening. I guess you weren't aware of that time.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Six o'clock tomorrow night, Little Joel. Legal Report. Legal's here, for free.
Legal is here.
For free, for the whole year.
Don't you have your time? I think the mileage job is going up.
There you go. That's a good attorney. Nothing to report? Did anybody have any questions under engineering that we may be able to answer? Nothing, okay, sorry. So let us move us to the Village Administrator and Economic Development.
Actually, I'm gonna yield the floor to Mr. Jalen.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, so you guys...
Well, come to the podium, Mr. Jalen Owens has the floor.
Thank you. Don't need to be sworn in like we talked about earlier.
Okay.
The village is one of them. That's what I'm saying. So, I had a few updates about what was going on in the villages, well, things are coming up. Mayor Shatton brought up the ARPA grant, we mentioned it briefly. We successfully submitted the project expenditure report before its deadline. We received first payment, but the second payment is supposed to come in sometime fiscal year 2023, and sometime this summer, I believe. Let's see, the AED grant, in collaboration with Chief Banger, we successfully applied for and was approved for an AED grant for the Village of Sherman. It's through a 2022 Heart Rescue Community AED Grant. They're a state-funded nonprofit organization. They will give an AED device, as well as mandants to practice AED and CPR training on. Coming up, some of you may have noticed, Sherman Boulevard, not 100% right now. It's got a fair amount of traffic on it, averages a little over 10,000 cars a day through the main part of the town. And it's, let's see, at the attention of the President of the Board, and the Board let noted that the five-to-seven-year plan from IHOP does not include Sherman Boulevard and for road repairs. We've contacted District 6, who confirmed that Sherman Boulevard isn't on the plan once again. They also confirmed that Boulevard is not, or if it is, in need of repair. Advice to be in a letter-writing campaign to our representatives, as well as the at IHOP. So we're studying that process very soon, and so...
Jalen's gonna bring us a new road.
That's right.
Can I ask a question, like, where's that start and where's that end?
If you, I travel every day, if you've traveled from, what is that, to Saguenum, not Saguenum, but Durston Parkway, all the way up, right when you hit the, right when you hit the bridge, that's when the road gets bad.
No, I mean, what, what is Sherman Boulevard?
Oh, from Saguenum River, at the bridge, all the way up to...
Business 55.
Business 55, yeah, the interstate.
Well, isn't this Business 55?
Yes, this is also...
So all the way to 55?
Yes.
With that I...
That's Sherman Boulevard.
Okay.
It's also called the store around 66.
Yeah, okay.
Officially, Business 55, referred to as Sherman Boulevard.
Okay, okay.
Another new thing, the Village Administrator and myself have been putting together a Sherman Welcome Packet for all the new residents, as well as the residents that are still here. It includes information about the park, services, and everything that the Village offers for any resident as information. That should be done within the next 30 days and out for everybody to see. And when I was introduced by President Klaftel back in January, he brought up the ILSIP program, and Village Administrator suggested I bring up that I did get the job.
What's that stand for?
Illinois Legislative Staff Internship Program.
Did you guys remember that Jalen was applying for that internship? And they only offer how many seats for that?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, and they're always having an abundance of well over 24 people. It's very difficult to get into that, into that internship, which you do want for, of course, the Republican side. It's very difficult to get into, so I think Jalen's got some news he'd like to share with the board tonight.
Yes, so I was accepted into it, and I've accepted their offer. I'm supposed to work with the Senate Republicans starting August 16th, so...
Nice, congratulations.
Thank you. But yeah, that's all I have unless there's any questions from any of you.
Questions?
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Chief asked a question.
I'd just comment on the AED grant that Jalen put together, it's a community grant, and it was awarded through the program that he mentioned, but the idea is that that will be stationed down at the park.
Is that what restored life to you last night?
But, well, I'm looking down at the session or at either area where staff can get to it.
And then, you said like there were, I don't know if they're old dummies, what are they called, I don't know. Pride of America?
Yeah.
Will you offer training, or will, will we as a village offer training? Or just to your staff?
We usually work with the fire department through that measure. We do have a couple of guys on the department that are CPR, AED instructors, and we cooperate with the fire department.
One other thing I was gonna add too, is the fire department was nice enough, we got some of their, not saying outdated, older AEDs, and I think we just gotta get battered for one, but then if that works out, we'll literally have one in every public works truck too.
Oh, nice.
So, that will also do to the fire department, police department, whatever, that helps us if we're out anywhere. Anything like that, because we've all been trained on it through the fire department. We've been certified in it, all the public works guys all have, so...
My mind needed it last time I plowed that truck.
When you were stuck?
Yeah.
I believe he's not feeling one, that's why.
Yeah, I'm not feeling one.
That's another story.
Oh, let's hear it.
No. There's ladies here. Alright, so let's move on, hey, good report, Mr. Owens.
Probably wasn't too painful to sit through.
Absolutely not.
No, that public hearing's over. No talking.
Jalen's been doing a very, very, very good job for us, and I am excited to see him move on to what I would think is, in my mind, is bigger and more fun things. He's gonna be General Assembly staffer on the Senate, on the Senate staff. Hopefully goes to appropriations where he can see to it that dollars are appropriated to Sherman Boulevard.
Guess he won't forget it.
Yeah, I can't officially agree, right? It's a conflict of interest.
But that's, that's where Jim Edgar went through that program, I went through that program, it's a very good program. It's how you learn the state budgets, if you do go on appropriations, which I think opens pretty much every door to you in, in government, state government, and you learn the entire process. And you can write your own ticket on where you wanna go after that, so congratulations, good work.
Thank you.
You didn't get it because you didn't put in the hard work, you did it because of everything you've done throughout your life, and the relationships that you've built, the way you carry yourself and convey yourself to the public and to fellow staff, and give good reports. I just can't thank you enough for everything you've been doing for the village.
Thank you.
For the next couple of months, we are excited to keep having you, you know, assist the village, so congratulations, good job. And then, before I move to the President's Report, we keep talking about this retirement and stuff, and I just, I hope that it's, he's as good as Tom Brady, he's as good as Michael Jordan.
Yeah.
And I hope he reconsiders his retirement right up to the very day where he leaves for a week or two and comes right back.
Yeah.
That's Bruce Beal.
Just one more year.
Alright, so let's go to the President's Reports, item number one, I'll read it in the record. That's an ordinance regarding the annexation of a trailhead property at Sherman Williamsville Trail. Ordinance 22-005, an ordinance annexing a certain property to the Village of Sherman. Administrator, anything you wanna brief on this super fast?
Sure, I believe it's a piece of property that the Village acquired.
This is the trailhead.
Two hundred years back. The Village has owned it, now it's just becoming part of the Village itself.
So we'll annex it as part of the corporate boundaries. Everybody comfortable? Wanna pass it tonight, this evening, it's on the, it's on the docket? Okay, so the Chairman Undertan motion to annex a certain property, the trailhead, Sherman Williamsville Trail, ordinance number 22-005, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Rockford makes a motion, signed by Trustee Tim. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Wong.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
That's five members voting yes and none voting no. The ordinance 22-005 will be adopted, signed by the House President, called the top five of the code. Item number two is the July 4th display. So, you all already know this because I had to communicate this to you, or wanted to communicate this to you as well, regarding fireworks, so for the general public, will sometimes, please publish the size of this for this year and this year only. We are going to move, we have to move, if we wanna stick with the same vendor, which we do, we have to move the fireworks display from the 4th, which it always historically has been on the 4th, to either July 2nd or July 3rd. We are going to, as a consensus of each individual what I've talked to, that expressed any interest in some, you know, was indifference, but move it to Sunday, July 3rd. Monday is July 4th, everyone seemed to think that July 4th, or July 3rd, that Sunday before, having the day off, would be the best day, and not knowing, you know, what was going on on the Saturday night, and not disrupting the evenings there, so... July 3rd looks like it's the date, so please put that out there, we'll work to get that out there now officially, and then people can start planning their parties and make arrangements to be at Sherman Village Park. Same location, same vendor, Larry Leferts, his company's actually been bought out by a different vendor, and I don't know the company off the top of my head.
J&amp;M.
Is it J&amp;M? Somebody he has worked with for 30 years. When they had a contractor, they had a contract, and they had to cover free. So, with the cost of shipping and the cost of fireworks these days, the container delivery of fireworks, the containers that are coming over, I mean, it's up 30%. So, and then the dollars that you have to advance, and Kevin probably knows this better than anybody in the room, businesses that are coming forward for lines of credit and trying to advance on inventory. Larry Leferts being a very small, you know, smaller entity, smaller business, the capital outlay that he would have had to make for this year, you know, alone, just didn't make sense for him, for where he's at, the stage in his life and all of that stuff. So, he and his colleague basically partnered up, but it's under the J&amp;M company business, Larry is with them. So, I don't, I didn't wanna see us, you know, leave Larry. Well, I don't think we even have the time to go searching for vendors, which we wouldn't want to anyway, but that being said, I don't think it's a problem to go July 3rd, I think it might be, you know, kinda fun to try it on that date because of it falling on a Sunday, and Monday being the holiday, and then people can kinda do what they're gonna do on the 4th, so... That's pretty much an announcement, but let's just get a consensus, everybody, is the board, is there a consensus to move it to July 3rd, just so we can say that?
Okay.
Alright, anybody opposed? Alright, so unanimously, board signals that they're in favor of moving it to July 3rd. So, the other little question in here I wanna ask you is, he did say he's gonna throw in additional stuff for us. It is a customer appreciation type of action for us agreeing to move it and understanding that we didn't wanna move it. So he's gonna throw in some extra items, but do we want to increase it at all from 13,000 to 15,000? Because of the cost of everything going up, so the 13,000 that we typically do is not going to be the typical 13,000 of yesteryear. So if we increase it to...
You're saying as many as fireworks?
Yes. If we go to 15, he's still gonna throw some extra in there for us as a customer appreciation type thing, but, just like a car, you know, just like inflation, everything, you're not gonna get the same amount because costs are up 30% of what we did in the past. So that's something to consider.
But I'll also add that, that, once again, we have a group of individuals, local businesses, banks, county markets, townships, who have come forward over the last couple of years, and I think it was starting two years ago, our fireworks show started to become free. Free in the fact that the village didn't have to pick up the additional expenses, so we added some features on our, like music and, you know, generated it, and invited vendors out to, you know, I actually invited you out to start selling things, I'm a concession stand. And then vendors out as well, sort of enhanced the experience for people who are visiting the park. Now it's in Sherman Boulevard, so...
Yeah, it's not gonna be 15,000 out of the budget per se, when you talk about like the sponsorship and stuff like that, so...
Yeah, we, again, we've been, we've been blessed with a lot of very generous individuals who have offset the village costs.
Good with it, good with it, good with it?
Yeah.
Good with it? Consensus, everybody, yes? Anybody propose? Okay, so we'll select the record, reflect, everybody is good with doing that this year. Alright, so Committee and Department Reports, anything to report, anybody think of anything? Nothing, Sherman Police Department, Chief Banger, nothing. Sherman Emergency Management Agency Director Mike Moes.
Just a brief report. We have completed and signed the new hand radio operator memorandum of understanding. We needed a new one because the prior group dissolved, and they were still interested in working with us. Those new people, we're planning to have activities and training together, so they'll come oriented with us. And their use is, obviously, if we lose communications in the village, that they can provide communications through mobile equipment that they provide, and the base station that they have set up, and you'll see. The natural hazards, multi-touristicial natural hazards committee that the county task force that they put together is moving along. There's been now three meetings. We're in the process of finalizing a new risk assessment that's required, that they want us to do, and I'm gonna be working with Chief Banger and Chief Masterhand in regards to consensus of what the risk analysis is. We've also put together a new list of what was considered, and Administrator Stratton's gonna be reviewing it, a list of critical infrastructure in the community, so we have things highlighted in case there's any disaster or problem. Everything from the water and sewer systems, to lift stations, to electrical stations, to governmental buildings. We include the park, the water tower, businesses, bridges, evacuation routes, and any other critical, for example, AT&amp;T hasn't bothered here, so we include that. And then we're gonna be updating the website to show the link to the plan, that, there's one already, but the new plan, I don't want that advertised. Training's going on for, for refresher for all the members and new members. It's going pretty good, I got one person that's pretty good at homes, already done all the admin stuff, so I'm real happy with that. I've also got an agreement with the National Weather Service to do a special training on the radar program we have, that they teach at the eye, because I could learn more on, on the use of it. So, they agreed that they do that, and I plan to record it, so that way for future training, we have that always available on our end. And then, separate from mercy management, more website related, I'm working with Mike in seeing if it's possible to provide information about rental property and business availability in the community. And it would list like square footage for the dessert meals, seating capacities, things like that, and that would be under that economic section. We don't have it figured out if it's possible, because obviously some of it is, especially with apartment rentals, you know, how do we keep that up to date, so we're not sure if we can be able to do it, but I am talking to LRS to see what that would entail, to get the website updated, as well as I've talked to our city county HDIS for a lot of the data that they have, and they've already agreed that some of the layers of whatever character we want, they'll provide us that database automatically, so hopefully all that can be integrated into the website. So if somebody sees a piece of property, they click on it, it'll come up with the other things like how much it would cost to rent, who do you talk to if you want rents, for footage, utility companies, all the pertinent stuff that they, to hopefully attract them to come into town and use present property that is available.
Yeah, I think the whole purpose of that was, now that the TIFs have kinda come to an expiration, and the structures have been built, and businesses are operating, and there's still some land that's available for the purpose of commercial development. The real focus was not really on the living side as much as it was on the leasing side of empty space, to help out those commercial buildings, but also to note, here's some commercial land that's also available. A section of our website at the TIF will then come down, and a new section will be introduced, which will be, now that we're here, and now that this is available, now we'll start pushing out the economic value of wanting to come to Sherman versus elsewhere, and then, and then, and then what is available as far as land availability and leasing spaces.
Or even things like how many times, when I was a village hall, how many times we get phone calls where what can we do, what can we use in the village for banquets or weddings, things like that, so all that data will be there to try to get attractions. Any questions? Yes?
I did have a question, of course, but, so at the Easter egg hunt, the sirens went off?
Yes.
What was that?
It was a mistake.
Okay.
That was a day that I was having training, and a new person was at the console, and I thought they had it on demo mode, and they had it on hot.
Well, had all of our attention.
Yes, it did, though we also, it didn't run at full cycle.
No, so we, everybody stopped, and they were like, okay, it's not Tuesday, and what, what are we, there's all these kids, what are we gonna do?
Right, and it's, it's not really embarrassing, but it's, it's too bad that the kids got real excited, and some of the kids and all that, but...
I mean, it was fine, I don't think it was overly, but we all kinda just stopped for a minute, like, what are we gonna do?
Yeah, it, and you know, the way I look at it, because I've had some people inquire and question, and my answer is, yeah, we made a boo-boo. But my question back is, what if it was real?
Right.
What was the game plan?
I was gonna tell it ready to get in the ditch.
Well, we did have a disaster preparedness plan, so we were fine.
Well, what were we gonna do?
Well, there's no different than what we would do if, if there was a, during one of our events, we already have scenarios for lost children, lost seniors, severe weather, or even thresholds that have been identified for lightning and high winds. So, the sad thing is, especially for the number, I mean, it's great that we had that many people in attendance, but we don't have a facility that's able to take care of it, so we had to look at alternate things. So from the village point of view, not a problem, we, you know, officers are over there, would have been able to handle that, including the evacuation. But that's something that even the businesses, if, if somebody's there sponsoring, they need to be aware since this is their event, or hosting it with us, that what needs to be done. And we're always available, if there's, if there's those questions, and review it, or even do an orientation.
No, I didn't mean to call you out, I was just...
No, no, I was expecting it, not, not at all, I'm glad you brought it up, because it, it's a different discussion. Anybody else wanna put me under the bus?
I didn't do that for that reason, I was really curious, I was like, why?
Some people in the back would like to do it.
There was a line out the door.
Exit two? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Public Works, anything from Public Works?
We're good.
You're good?
I know, I could send a phone.
No, I ain't getting thrown under the bus.
For two more years, you're good.
New business, there is no new business before the board, there is no old business, there's no celebrations. Seating recognition, bringing up, and now staple a record, there's no executive session this evening, so that brings us to the public comment period. Nobody wishing to address the board?
She's not gonna issue a motion.
No. Okay, so we have no individuals wishing to speak under public comment, which is gonna bring us to the annulment resolution. Any, oh, wait.
Oh, wait, on Saturday.
Yes, I'm gonna make that announcement, absolutely. So Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM is cleanup day at Waldrop Park. So, all hands on deck, if you can make it, please show up and...
We'll be there as long as we can, be ready for softball.
Yep. So if you can make it, that'd be awesome, that'd be great. Garage sales, I think, were successful, at least Mike driving around and trying to dodge as many cars as I was dodging. I don't know what it was like in the other subdivisions, some of Quail Ridge and Steeple Chase, but they seem to be very successful. So that brings us to the weekend after, and the throw it away if it didn't sell, or donate it, or whatever, but there's available dumpsters if not. So, 8:00 AM, Saturday to 11:00, cleanup day at Waldrop Park. Anything I'm forgetting?
Is he bringing the crispy green yellow?
Yeah, yeah, like crispy, I like yellow.
Actually, we have a crispy green truck coming up this morning. Don't build, don't, don't build. Yes, we will have snacks and treats available.
Out of the trunk.
And I will manage myself to stand right there and just eat them.
Eat in front of everybody.
Turns out, I'm a legal lawyer.
Just a guy.
It's a legal lawyer.
BLH isn't making it this year, really.
BLH cannot make it, however, we're coordinating with them, trying to figure out, they can collect, we can collect and hold for them, and then they come back.
And no shred.
And the shred's gonna be on the...
I talked to Tom again from the affordable shredding today. He says, man, he feels bad about it, he says, I just don't have enough trucks. And he says, I know, I've ordered a truck, but with this current chip issue, I can't get a truck. He said, but, here's what I will do for you. I will schedule another time, do, do it like for an hour, two hours down at Sherman Village Park. It's close to us, it's close to you, and we can have people drop off, and we'll do announcements, we'll take care of it. So, they'll come back a lot of the time.
So, we are gonna be collecting for BLH then?
Yes.
What about the fees for the TVs and things like that?
We'll figure all that stuff out. We looked at the numbers for the last couple of years, I don't have right before me, on whether or not it would be more beneficial just to go in a lot of people to get rid of those old TVs and things versus paying the fee one way or the other, it wasn't that great. It wasn't as large as I thought it was, I thought it was like several thousand dollars, it's not. So, we'll, we'll end up collecting for them on Saturday. I don't know how, we're trying to, again, coordinate, the coordination of how they want us to, do they want it stored inside of a truck, do they want it inside, say, for a trailer?
How do we reply to that?
We might not be able to, is what I'm saying, I don't know yet, we're still trying to get a BLH right now.
Maybe we just have them on the same day that we can have the shredder.
Yeah, that's possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Makes sense.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure it out.
I'll be there.
You're gonna be checking the limo?
One, I believe, on the donut.
Limon donuts again? Okay.
Not blocking.
Don't get orange.
Not blocking.
Get some Starbucks out there.
Don't, you don't, I'm not gonna.
I'm whatever, I don't care. Pam, Pam, what are you?
Taking eggs, dude, or something?
I know Sean has requests, what's, what's yours?
I don't need donuts.
Carrots.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
New boots. Can I get some new boots?
Can you eat your boots? Well, I've only thought of shoe in your mouth.
Put your mouth where... Alright, let's get out of here. So, is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray makes a motion saying, am I trustee Rockford, all the same, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed to, we are here since fifty, sixty-two, sixty-two. So, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.